Really, but I'll call a meeting in order. Anybody wish to say the pledge of allegiance? Oh, approve the agenda. We have one addition. It would be a new business F for food service balance.
Just to clarify, it's twenty-three, twenty-four food service.
Oh, I did not see that.
That's okay.
Twenty-four food service. With that, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
I'll make a motion to approve the addition.
Motion by Datsnod, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Motion passed. Approve consent agenda. Minutes, floor financial report, December activity fund, January, December bills, December payroll. Anybody having questions on any of them? With no questions, anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda first.
Motion by Mancstrum, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Johnson, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Public comments. Here. Board comments.
I just wanted to thank the administration for using the school for our teacher unit this weekend. It wasn't, as we talked about earlier, a big success. We had around three hundred and twenty-five emergency purchases in the building. Between Friday afternoon and Saturday, as far as I know, no major pickups in as far as the buildings went. We had some technology issues that nothing to do with the school or anything.
How long are in the kitchen? Tyler came in and hit a button and everything was fine.
Tyler was around, which was very nice. He was here for his son. But he also helped pull down the community center a few times in the year or so. We appreciated it. But thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Correspondence. Old business, new business, open enrollment application. Always love these.
So we have.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten for next year has a seven in the district.
Okay. So our teachers. I don't have a name to give you, if anybody want to approve the.
We're not supposed to do names anymore.
Oh, you're not?
No, that's a fair thing.
Oh.
Yep.
Not even last name.
That's why I didn't even give it.
I was like, I don't even have it. I kept looking at it like, oh, I don't have it. She's being stingy today.
Yep, no, we're not supposed to.
Whatever. Motion by Bernard.
I'll second.
Second.
Rules are always changing.
Second by Datsnod, roll call vote.
He wouldn't let me do some one-time, like it would, it said it needed updates or something.
Oh, my too. I had to do right on my own computer.
My, my home computer doesn't have a microphone. Or a camera.
Sorry, I forgot. She said I forgot about it, but it wasn't on this one.
So we're in person?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We could do it in person or Zoom. I, I was just saying Zoom because it would be handy for people not that.
Right.
I can update it up.
We can do it.
It doesn't matter on a Monday.
I like Zoom if it's really fast and you don't have to.
It's, I'm gonna read the top line and the score and move on. And if there's no issues or concerns, it's going to be fast.
Yep.
So. Seven thirty on the tenth via Zoom for now and. Won't you talk to him and see when you can open the three sixty up?
Yep.
And then we'll hold that information up then. And we can open the, the.
What do you got?
The evaluation at any time too. I always wait till the last day anyway.
I was just gonna say, well, we're gas rates, so.
Please don't finish mine, because I'm not gonna feel like I have to do it on my computer.
So we can open it prior to two weeks, but I'll just, I'll just wait to hear from Melissa on the three sixty mark. And then we'll commit to pass closing dates. The closing date is nearly. It doesn't show off, so. If it's closed on the twelfth, you can do it on the thirteenth. I've done it. Okay. Food service balance.
Yeah.
Okay. I received an email from someone at NEDPI and they were reviewing our school financial report. And they have stated that because our food service account was negative at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we need to clear that with general fund money. They don't want us to have a negative balance in the hot lunch program. So basically what I'm looking for is just a motion by someone to transfer an additional three thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-three cents to the food service fund to cover the negative balance that was on our June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four financial report. So.
I'll second. Motion by Johnson, second by Mancstrum, roll call vote Johnson?
Yes.
Mancstrum?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Datsnod?
Yes.
Motion yes. These are busy.
Thank you.
Policy committee.
Okay, so we have four policies to go through. First one, FDE. That is a education, special education and disabled students. The policy was reviewed by North Dakota State School or North Dakota School Board Association to update. There were, there was a substantive, substantive, substantive change made through the policy. And the SBA recommends updating the policy, FDE, to reflect these changes. And it was just some language with the Whiteman School District and the South Valley Special Ed Unit. Not only to comply with our policies and procedures, but also an I D E A in section five oh four. Those that want to make additions to this to make sure that we have safeguard protocols in for, for our students. So I would be looking for a motion to rescind our current FDE policy and adopt a new FDE policy. And we'll second reading if there isn't any discussion.
Anybody have any questions? Comments on FDE? If not, would you like to make a motion to rescind FDE?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Motion passes.
Okay. Next one is.
Nope.
Yep.
We have to approve the new FDE. Anybody want to make a motion to approve or updating policy FDE?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Datsnod, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Do I need a roll call? Is that what you're gonna?
Well, yes, but also, um, and wait a second.
Are you, I amend my motion to wait a second.
And a second.
But yes, these are policies, so they should be roll called.
I was thinking, because they're policies that we do all the time. You don't, you don't need a roll call vote if you do them all, if they're common on your agenda.
Is that in most part where they went through all of them?
Just that you have one, one time.
I'm fine with it all, but as soon as I just said, I was like, should I have a call? But we do it all the time, so.
Your century code? And so I'm asking for a motion to rescind our current ABBB policy and adopt a new ABBB policy. And wait a second reading if there, if there's any discussion.
First, we need a motion to rescind ABBB policy.
Anyone have a motion to rescind current policy?
Motion by Mancstrum, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Johnson, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Motion passes. Is there any more questions? Need a motion to adopt the new ABBB policy and wait a second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Datsnod, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Last one, policy DE, staff code of conduct. Did not find it in our policy manual that we have in our office. I went down to elaborate and double check the policy manual there. It was not in there as well. And so this policy is not a current policy. It's really not a neat potatoes type policy on staff code of conduct, code of conduct. If this talks, call it, gives some recommendations on, on, on law, but also with the number of other policies that we have. Hopefully should make sure Paul's not overseas, so there's a whole list of other policies that deal with, could deal with staff code of conduct. But anyway, this one. You know, the biggest piece on it is the reporting and the investigation. There's an entire policy that we have in our manual right now that just specifically talks about the investigation process. So this is just kind of overseeing all of the policies that deal with staff and their code of conduct and behaviors. And so I would ask for a motion to adopt the new DE policy, wait a second reading if there's not any discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Datsnod, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Motion passes. Next is SRC TC report.
Well, the outline was included from the December meeting, not much really to add there. I know this month's meeting, I know there was a staffing change took place in the health careers. I haven't really heard how that is all the time, blowed out as of right yet. So I'll be curious to see where that's from.
I've never heard of it.
A teacher chose not to return after Christmas birthday, so. I'm sure there'll be a little bit more discussion on that at this month's meeting, which will come out in a week, so. To be reported on there.
Any questions? I need. Admining boards, our principal.
We attended PD and Washington today, a good engaging speaker, had some PLC time. The NDA plus, the new state assessment, we complete interim assessments for the elementary as well as for most of our ELA, our reading in the high school. It was a good test run for a couple things. It's good to see what the new state test looks like. We tested out an iPad cart for testing that looked really well, so that should make testing go a lot smoother over the high school and the elementary this year. So I'm really excited about that. And then I sat in on a webinar about the upcoming assessments and I did feel I turned a whole lot on that one. There'll be another workshop in February and then I'll start, we'll together start scheduling all our state assessments this year and I'll report back how, how that's all going. Fundraiser.
Just off to the initial test, you thought that the data was very much in line with what we've seen.
Yeah.
Is much better?
Yeah.
Does this seem to flow better with what we've seen with our kids?
I compared it with our current star data and it was all lining up pretty, pretty much. There weren't a lot of surprises with it. Talking to the kids, whether they liked it or not, they don't like the assessment. But you know what? They did, and they went pretty well. I was, I was happy with it. The data we get back from these ones, it's not, it gives us, it's a very ten thousand foot view, which is what state testing is too. But it'll be interesting to see growth, because we won't state test now for a few months. So in the state test will be similar to this one, so it should show us some growth with kids. And then next year, when we do fall, which I only did a few classes, but rolling out, we should, when we go fall, winter, and the bigger assessment, we should see the growth and all of that. It's fine. It's a state assessment. The picture they have is great. I'll report back, I think it's great. What they're, what they're proposing, I don't know, so. Funders have raised three hundred and twenty-two dollars for Jesse's toy box and we sold it to Toy Box as well for Christmas. We were looking at it to have a compliment. Fourth, fifth and sixth grade will be attending a basketball game on February third during the day at NDS. They are having an elementary day and they are bringing in schools from around the area. The Lingerwood's going, we're going, Blue hanging from the store. So our kids will get out and must go watch some college basketball and then get back from the bus and go back that afternoon. So pretty cool opportunity. And I, they had to move their schedule around to do it and I think they're really excited too, so. It'll be fun. I attended a seat principal meeting on the fourteenth. It was interesting. They talked about the literacy summit, it's a big reading summit that'll be in Fargo in July. I might look at us possibly sending a few staff up there. They're looking at reviewing math regimens. That was a topic of conversation in my principal meetings today. Still don't have good answers on what is gonna replace Saxon, for those of us that really like Saxon math. And then there was a discussion about early childhood and daycare. And just talking about rural and how schools are involved in this. And I passed a lot of information actually out to the Guts Mark, because she is up in work, like. Daycare and I'm hoping we are gonna be able to form an alliance partnership, one set up and running in some way, shape or form of, you know, we, her and I have talked a lot about what after school could look like and what, you know, facilities and just different things. And I, I hope it becomes a good partnership, they keep up running, we can be, be an ally to them. Some of our community needs. Turns out, something every community needs, by the way. We are, but they, they talked a lot, a lot of grand opportunities and things like that, so. We, Arts and Residences, this is Hoppers, working with Arts and Residences in late March to come in and talk all some stuff. I'll have more details later. We're finalizing some things, but kind of like we did a few years ago with the hoop dancing. It'll culminate in a community event on that Friday. I've got it down as the twenty-eighth of March. But we're still finalizing our details on what exactly all this is gonna be spoken on, we'll on that later. Just thanks for everybody who attended things before Christmas. We had a lot of cookie making and things on the elementary and the people came. Thanks for everybody that donated winter clothing to us. And then student engagement surveys are gonna be opening up soon. And we'll get those completed, not this week, but Friday, next week, I'm gonna work with this one out to get those done. The state mandated student engagement survey. They are fantastic, great data. Somebody's sarcastic, I shouldn't be, but, but some we do, and we do look at it and our students look at it. One other thing I do wanna, it's not elementary principal per se, but I do think if, I can talk about this since I'm qualified in this situation. You guys have been getting a lot of emails, a lot of things about Power School breach. So Power School was, had a data breach. Our school was one of the schools. What data that is, we're not a hundred percent sure. But it, it's still kind of up in the air, but we don't store a lot of real personal data on our Power School. Me and Mr. Churchill have dug into a lot of stuff to try to see what it might be and, and, and I know Sherry has been on the phone with people about it, Mr. DeCana's been on the phone. The thing is, it's not a North Dakota issue, it's a larger issue. North Dakota has some century codes that we now have to follow on our reporting of it. So we, we've been talking with NEDIT, which is North Dakota Information Technology. They will be in contact with us here shortly to talk about some other steps. We have to do password resets and things like that. But we were made aware of it about as quickly as you guys were. We, we were made aware and we held out, I think, later that day. So I don't have a lot of great answers, but just, I figured I'd let you guys know about that, that this was a national thing. And North Dakota just happened to be one of them that was hit and our school happened to be one that was gonna hit as well, so. Which, starting in a year or two, we're not actually gonna be with our school anymore. I don't mind explaining that either, but we'll be moving to infinite campus, I believe, if, gonna be the switch that's coming as well. And if you guys want to add to your conversation.
I knew that piece right here. So a little bit that I know is that, you know, it's not Sherry, everybody's looked at it. We've never used social security numbers around here, where some school districts can't say that right now. So, I mean, I was at a meeting today and heard one school probably put out a five hundred social security numbers, so.
Or, or previous students, no current students.
Right, yep.
That have social security.
And most schools that are seeing it is because they took dual credit or those types of things, because the college needed a social security number or they were transfers in from another school that required it. That's mostly what schools are seeing, a social security number. We have filed a claim with the North Dakota Insurance with NEDIT. We have filed, we sent in, there's a report that Mr. Kern and Hunter got off of Power School that said, we're not coders, so I don't know what it really means, but it's in code. And we have sent that in along with all the correspondence from NEDIT to our insurance company, so we have filed. And we're tracking our hours that we spend on our insurance.
That's all I had to say. I'm sure that, since you guys might get questions too, as we keep getting emails constantly saying, important, important, important. All got it. Thank you.
Hey, so the principal report, Mason Sealy. Be honored tomorrow for being our January student of the month. McKinley Hopperman placed second at the American Indian Oratorical Region Competition up in Ark River. And she qualified for the state competition. Tomorrow morning, we will have our school-wide poetry out loud competition. These students won their classroom competition and will be competing. Well, the high school ones will be competing tomorrow, but these are the students that won their classroom. Competitions, Harper, Walter, Olivia Hetland, Cora, Datsnod, Claire Boyer, Reese Hosford, Alan Severance, Shelby Bishop, Mauro Farquin, Hannah Mount, Alex Wolf, Addison Gitzbahn, Asprey Grace, Shay Abel and Vincent Strini. Congratulations go out to Mrs. Mancstrum and Mrs. Strini on being nominated for the twenty-twenty-five North Dakota Governors Awards for the arts with their poetry slam competition. They've been, they've also been invited to the banquet in Bismarck and their nomination is active for the next two cycles. We will be hosting a winter celebration fest on Friday at three o'clock. We'll be celebrating some things that students have been, have received. And we also will be announcing, making a big announcement that day, at that time, so Friday at three o'clock. If you're able to come to the school, that'd be great. The juniors and fifth graders will be presenting their Native American tribute projects in the community center on January twenty-third from nine to eleven, this Thursday. And then the FFA chapter team plays silver at the state competition. I don't know if you've talked to Michaela, she's a student teaching with Desi. And she said they were one, I think one point away from getting a goal, so they did really well. Activities director report, some sad news. They got Tanner Carlson, he's resigned from his position as head volleyball coach. And Shannon Score, he's resigned from her position as a junior high track coach. Like to thank both of them for the time they've invested in our student athletes and the programs. The Warbirds girls basketball team won the Barnes County Constellation Championship and Emerson Johnson was named in the all tournament team. Team currently has a seven-three record. The Warbirds boys basketball team beat Enderland in the seventh place game at the Barnes County Tournament and have a three and five overall record. Congratulations to Hunter Dunn and Peyton Teis on signing with Maple State for football, football scholarships. And then your live event will be covering both the girls and the boys, doubleheader tomorrow at Milner. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Ten day, screen parent teacher conferences, we added, we added a date and some times, switched them up here a little bit. Both our principals are going to be at Bismarck at the NCL winter conferences on January fifth. That's, that's supposed to be February. February fifth through the seventh, wanted to have an opportunity to run with a suggestion that we got from some staff on splitting our conferences. So our conferences, and this allows our, Mr. Kern to be here on Wednesday evening. Our conference is going on Wednesday, four to six. We will not let school out early that day. And then on Thursday, we will let school out early at three, like we typically do, three-thirty to seven-thirty. We're looking forward from feedback from staff and parents to see how that change goes. We know in the spring it's less attended than the fall, and in the fall after eight o'clock, there were still a few people in the building, but it was eight.
What date was this again?
So it'll be February sixth, fifth and sixth. So four to six on the fifth and three-thirty to seven-thirty on the sixth. And Saturday, January eighteenth was the end of our sixty-day probationary period with the request to bond against our building levy for the roof and fire alarm projects. So we have, I sent an email earlier today to notify the lawyer and the bonding agent that we received no arguments against our, against this, so. We should buy up some paperwork in February for that. We currently have a student leave for work experience every day during lunch hours to work at the Black Pelican. Seems to be going very well. Thank you to Mrs. Law, Mrs. Strini for helping the student get this, get this within his schedule. Kind of a test run, because we hope that we can find ways to accommodate some of our students. I'm also working with the daycare preschool center next year to also see if we can find some student opportunities, learning opportunities to, and career exploration next year as well with them, so. It seems to be going very well with our current student and so hopefully something that we can continue to build off of. We had our high school after school planner request a leave of absence. They're using their vacation days for thirty days. We have hired Matty Furby to fill in during this time and thank you to Tyler and Dave, they've also been helping fill in as well with you.
Okay. We're gonna have, next meeting, we talked about our audit report coming on. Cause that has something to do with the bond.
Yeah.
He was here today working holiday pace, so we're hoping that we will have, yes, that in place.
There is more progress on our audits.
Yes.
And we need them to, to bond.
Yes.
So.
That we completed today, so we have that last year's completed. Which, he's close, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yep, because he was asking lots of questions today and clarifying and.
He's just so nonchalant, laid back and it's just.
Oh, you've never sat through one of his reports? You're starting to sweat going, we are so screwed. And then at the end, he's like, oh, you guys are fabulous. It's like, are you kidding me? That's coming, I'm sure. Looking forward to it. Man, I know he missed it.
Yeah, just.
You're on a last little trip that day. So anyway, needing it for.
Thank you, everybody.
You might be back in time. You might be back in time.
Do you have a shop?
That's on the bus driver.